I'd like to call this meeting, order please. Roll call.
Mayor Yanich.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Ahman.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dokken.
Here.
Fagerling.
Here.
DeBleek.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Would you all please stand as we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? I have one. I'd like to add Mr. Don Williamson between eight and nine, between number eight and number nine, right after the City of Wilmer website demonstration. Any others? With that, we'll move into the consent items. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I did want to make mention at under miscellaneous the flags of honor activity this weekend, or this week.
And you'll do that under miscellaneous?
That's fine.
Okay. Move to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent items. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Let's consider the resolution accepting the offer of the sale of the $1,406,000 general obligation bond. And to talk about that is Mr. Dan Green.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Doug Green with Springsteen Incorporated, again on here on behalf of Kathy Aho. And she does send her sincere apologies for missing both meetings. It just worked out that way, unfortunately. But again, she did send her apologies. This morning at 10:00 AM, we were pleased to take bids on behalf of the city and had a very successful bond sale, received three bids. In front of you is what we call a bid tabulation. It's this yellow page.
It's actually white. It's actually white, sorry.
Oh, is it white? Sorry about that. Mine's yellow. Sorry. It's a, it has the results of the bonds, of the bids that came in. The winning bidder was from Oppenheimer, out of Minneapolis. They don't buy a whole lot of municipal bonds, but there certainly is a, they certainly have a need for them with their investors. You see, we've received, as I mentioned, received three bids. They all took a little bit different approach to it. We allowed them some flexibility in the way they bid. That certainly benefits them, but it benefits us more so because it ultimately gets us lower interest rates if we can give them some flexibility in the way they bid. Namely, they can combine a lot of those annual serial maturities into bigger blocks. And that just makes it easier for them to sell to investors. And you see, Oppenheimer took the first nine years and combined them together and then left the '22 and '23 maturity alone. We take the total interest costs and their discount, or that's their underwriters' compensation, add that together for the net interest cost, do a present value calculation to get to that true interest rate, which is really the effective interest rate. And that came in at, winning bid at 2.06, which is quite a bit, quite a bit lower, what, 16 basis points than the second place bid. So I think that shows the benefits of competitive sales. The 2.06 percent was about 17 basis points higher than what we estimated about five weeks ago. And some of that had to do with just interest rates moved for these non-bank qualified bonds just kind of moved in the wrong direction just a little bit. And the other part of it was that, if you see at the bottom, the re-offering schedule, with the interest rates this low, those underwriters are offering premium bids. It's called coupon protection. They don't want to be stuck with these 60 basis points in the first year and 75 in the second year. When interest rates do go up, and they will go up one day, they don't want to be stuck with these bonds that are paying this coupon. So what they do is they throw us a premium. They throw us extra cash, but in exchange, we pay those coupons of 2% through '21, and then 2.125 in '22, and 2.25 in '23. It all works out into the true interest rate calculation. But that's the difference you see in those coupon rates of 2% and then the yields. So what they have done is they threw about $20,000 in premium. And so the city now has that. It can use it, initially, we have it deposited into the construction fund, use it for additional projects, or if things change, you can use it to reduce the levy in the future to go and pay back these bonds. So that's an explanation of the re-offering schedule you see at the bottom of that sheet. One thing I wanted to hit on again was the credit rating that the city received, double A2, for a moderately sized city. It's, again, third highest credit rating from the top. It's an excellent credit rating. I can't say for certain, but throughout the country with the cities this size, it's certainly on the higher credit rating when you compare it to other cities throughout the country. Some things that Moody's pointed to, some of the strengths and some of the challenges. The strengths are just that you're a regional center, got a very diversified economy with it being the county seat, with the Haas healthcare, and with the, you know, some agriculture around, and of course with Ginnie O. as well. So a very diversified economy, not just, you're not just relying on one type of industry here. And then also, again, the very proactive financial measures and budget measures that you've taken over the last few years have kept you in a very solid financial position. So those are the two things that they've pointed to as strengths. The challenges, they mentioned elevated debt burden. That's only because of the hospital debt. So once you take that out, that's not, the debt burden is not high compared to others. And then just the inherent risk of the running a enterprise like the hospital. And hospitals performed very well over the last few years, but there is still, and as you know better than anyone, inherent risk in that type of operation. And so they mentioned that as well. And then the other factor that they mentioned is a challenge, that there's really nothing you can do about it, or the socioeconomic indicators. And that's the wealth levels. And that's the same story whenever you get outside of a major metro area. The wealth levels just, you know, obviously don't compare it to larger metropolitan areas. And so those are the strengths and challenges. Obviously, with the double A2 rating, the strengths greatly outweigh those challenges that they list. And other than that, I, that's about all I had for the council. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to.
Further, Councilman Reese?
Mr. Green, thank you for being here. It was interesting to listen to you about the different Moody considerations. Appreciate that. I just look at, and I don't understand at all, and I appreciate your explanation. BBI, 3.95.
Right.
I don't, I, can you explain?
There's no way anyone would ever, unless you live in this small little world of municipal bonds. That's the Bond Buyer Index. I call it the Municipal Bond Dow Jones. The Dow Jones is the, we all look at that, is that one number, whatever it is, 10,000, 11,000. That's the indicator of where the market is. This indicator, the BBI, is the municipal bond indicator. It happens to be a composite of 20 issuers out there in the world. They're probably California, Texas, New York. And they follow the price and how those particular bonds are trading on the secondary market in the 20th year maturity. Now, these bonds only went out 10 years, and, you know, the average life is about five years. So there's no correlation between the 2.06 that we received and the 3.95. The only correlation is just the trend of that, of the BBI over time to show you where the, generally where the municipal market is compared to, you know, last few weeks, months, and years.
So the 3.95, I don't know if I'm understanding, but the 3.95 is an index?
Is an index, correct.
But is there municipal bonds going for that?
Well, like I said, they are, they track that. They take 20 names. I bet there's like a New Jersey Turnpike. And they look at that 20th year. So it would be 2012, 2032, how a 2032 maturity is trading in the secondary market for roughly double A-rated general obligation bonds. And so they'll look at that, that's trading out there in the markets just like any other security. And that's that indexy, is, that's a composite of those 20 different issuers that they randomly pick.
Okay, so that New York Turnpike could be at that 3.95?
That 20th year maturity is trading. But again, that's out of 20 years, so.
Yep, okay.
You know, much higher, obviously, than.
Okay.
Than the 2.06.
Okay. The other question I had was, you mentioned wealth index?
The rating agencies will look at wealth indices of a city, of a, well, they actually look at the whole county, just frankly, because that's where they have data on.
So you're talking incomes?
Incomes, per capita income, median household income.
I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that right.
Right. Thank you for that clarification. It senses data.
Okay.
Further comments or questions? Councilman Dokken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming tonight. Listening to our city administrator this morning, we have an open-mic program, and we talk about what's going to happen tonight. And I noted that one of the things that Charlene said was that they ask more questions, okay? And I realize, and I think a lot of people do, there's a lot of financial uncertainty, not only in our country, but in our world. And so I'm wondering, she also used the term that they took a more serious look and that they also looked at our reserves. And I wanted to ask you, what sort of implication do our reserves hold for us?
In terms of the credit, the city credit rating?
Right.
It's one of the major factors. Reserves, when you look at jurisdictions' reserves, it can, it can really tell, and more so the trend of those reserves, it can tell a whole lot about a community. It can just tell, you know, the leadership, what, how, just how much financial security and how much financial flexibility they have. Drawing down a reserve, which many people have done over the last years, is not inherently a bad thing. If there's policies in place, there's that floor. Even if you go under that, what that policy is, if you demonstrate that you have a financial, long-range financial plan to get back and to meet that, that level of reserves, you know? So I don't want to say, you know, a declining reserve level is, is a bad thing at all, as long as it's a part of a overall plan.
Okay.
Certainly.
And then you also indicated that Rice Memorial Hospital was a challenge or a risk. Could you explain some more to us about that?
Just the nature of hospitals, in the business of hospitals, it's a, I'm certainly no expert in the finances of hospital, but certainly it's just subject to a lot of economic risks, a lot of legislative risks, certainly. I think it's yet to be seen, you know, full impact of the Affordable Care Act. And, you know, there could be other things come down the road in the future. So there's just, there could be, you know, legislative changes at the state or federal level that would drastically change the, you know, future course of any, of any hospital, and certainly this one as well. So that's generally what they're, there's some things out of a hospital's control. And whenever that's the case, there's just inherent risk.
Right. Thank you.
Councilman Ahman, did you have a question before?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thank you, Doug, for explaining this to us in simplistic terms. Appreciate that.
No, hope so.
We all have recurs.
Right.
Thank you for patience. When you talk about the BBI, as Councilman Reese was talking, saying the Turnpike in New Jersey, whatever, you're basing this, all the index, based on the current 11-year notes? Or is this based on an average of a conglomeration of five-year, 10-year, 20-year bonds? Or is it, is this specifically for 11- or 10-year bonds?
The BBI?
Yes.
It is specific on a, the names that, and I don't know who puts the name and who decides what 20, when I say names, I mean issuers. I don't know who decides, you know, which 20 go in there and get tracked and how often, you know, they rotate in and out. And I think it's somewhat like the Dow Jones. There's 30 names in there, and for whatever reason, some get pulled in and pulled out over time. But specifically, they're looking at the 20th year maturity. Because if you go up and look at these term bonds, these are individual bonds. Like that 2023 is a 10-year, somebody holds now a 10-year security of the city. And so, you know, City of Wilmer wouldn't be included in the BBI because it only goes out 10 years. But if there was, it is the 20th year. And it's always the 20th year.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Further questions or comments?
I have a comment. Did I call you Dan?
That's fine.
Anyway.
Anything, start with the, yeah.
I knew it was, it is Doug, right?
It is.
Okay.
It is, right.
And I apologize for the.
That's fine.
Thank you. Do we do a resolution here now?
Yes, it is, it is a resolution. So you would, motion to approve the resolution.
And which, do I read all that?
I think you need a motion first, so, yes, a motion to consider a resolution accepting the offer on the sale of 1.46 million general obligation improvement bond series 2012B, providing for their issuance and levying a tax for the payment thereof.
I would move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the resolution on the table. Roll call.
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ahman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dokken.
Aye.
Fagerling.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Very good.
With that, we will move into the City of Wilmer website demonstration. I wanted to say that right.
You did. Nice job. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Today is a very exciting day for me. It's been a lot of work, a lot of hard work. And I have 12 other people, I don't know if they're watching or not tonight, but that are excited, I'm sure, as well to be, to be, have something to show everybody this project. I'll get my mouse out here. Our website hasn't seen a different view in 11 years. It's been that long. So it really has been a project. I just wanted to go back and show some history of where our website kind of started and where we've gone. Our first website was in 1997, so 15 years ago. And it was created only by one person. Very little information. It was right around that dot com boom time when people were getting, let's just get a website and get it out there because everybody's doing it. This is the oldest picture I could find. This was in 2000. And I guess if I knew the directions of websites back in 2000, I should have taken picture of the first one. But this is the second generation of our website in 2000. Yesterday, prior to our launch, we had a design, like I said, was created in 2001. That's when that was updated, and not much has changed from it. It's got some good information on it. There's lots of information, but it's just very difficult to manage, to find, and all that. You know, we have a pretty good-sized organization. Not just one person can handle all the information, all the tasks. The old site wasn't good for that. We had no standardized themes. So you went to the police department, or you went to the fire department, and it looked different. And it looked, the city clerk's department. It's all changed. And the last thing was that it was extremely hard for citizens to find information. You'd have to know what department you were going to to find anything. I, as a, you know, I live in Wilmer, and prior to my government service, I probably would have had no idea what was going on. So it's very important that we take care of that. So it's not, just because we might work in a department doesn't mean citizens work in departments. From our old site, the most requested information was area information links. But the old site didn't have much marketing on it. So we kind of failed in that respect. And just a number is, to see how much the web has grown, 65% increase in pages viewed since 19, or since 2007. So over five years, we've had almost double what we had then. This is the website you're probably extremely familiar with. I just was putting those in there to reminisce. And you don't get to see a picture of the new one yet, if you haven't seen it, but it's coming. Today's site. We have a new, brand-new, modern design. We have a new organizational structure that we aim at citizen groups. So take out the departments. The departments are still there, if you like it that way. But for the regular citizen, we want to know, I'm a resident, I'm a visitor, I'm a business, what am I, and what can I provide to you? We now have an easy update process for staff, that all of our staff can participate. And that helps with keeping things up to date, that we keep current items. And one of the biggest things that you don't see at the moment, but it's provided a large framework for ongoing projects. So we've got a lot of stuff coming down the lines here in the next year to do interactive, online forums, online payments, all that stuff. We can do much easier with the framework we have in place now than we ever could with the old one. So this new website was developed entirely in-house. So we had a team of 13 people who are up there on the board, and all from different departments that we worked together to come up with this. We looked at it from a citizen's perspective. So we had the goal and said, if I come into the site and I have no knowledge of city government, can I find what I'm looking for? That's what we want to provide. The second thing we also looked at was marketing, is that, like I said, the old site, we had big-time hits on the area information. And now we wanted to incorporate that throughout the site. And as last, already today, we have over 200 pages of information. And before we quite get there, tomorrow, so this isn't tomorrow, tomorrow, but in the future, we're planning to add lots of new and interactive features. And today, although the site does look good on tablets and iPads, we do want to make it more accessible for anything, any device. So the next step is to create a mobile-friendly device, so you can pull, or a mobile-friendly site, so you can pull it up on your phone. You can pull it up on your phone today, just have to zoom in. We don't even want to have to zoom in. We're all ready for, for apps, iPhone App Store, the Android market, online payments, we're ready, and social media, we're ready. It's not here today, but we're ready to implement it when it's time to go. So we'll see lots of stuff coming very soon. And with the way that web apps and other tools are going, it's just going to get bigger. You know, it has since 1997. Dave, you want to, I'm going to give you a demo, if you haven't seen the new site. This is the homepage of the new site. And I just kind of wanted to highlight some key pieces, particularly on this page. First, we see the menu bar, and that's the green across the top. I know you can't see the laser on the TV. And we've divided it, again, into those organizational units. So residents, businesses, visitors, and if there's something government, you can find it much easier than trying to figure out what department it's in. We have this piece, which is called the slider. And that gives the, kind of the big news, the big events, what's happening now. And we've included graphics and everything as compared to what we have now, which is not much. So we've got the pool in this case, and of course, we've moved. Down below the slider, we have all these little, I call them news boxes, and those we change as well. So those can be some of the current information. So we've got street improvements, so you can go see the street improvement list, the mayor's update, that's up there, and sunshine coming up here in a couple weeks. So it'll probably be a pretty attractive site. Below, we've got the news center. And that is, again, just more information that can be updated. We put in, you know, a daily basis, and what's going on in Wilmer. We have quick links over to the right side, and then a calendar as well. And the calendar doesn't just do meetings, it does events as well. So if there, for example, sunshine, the 11th through the 14th is on that calendar as well. So civic center events and that kind of thing are put in there, so you can find it all in one spot, all in one place, don't have to look anywhere else. Probably one of the last things I wanted to show, if I get the mouse going here, is our new Report a Problem site. And what this basically does is allow people to submit a ticket, would be a good word to say, I guess. If there's a pothole, if there's something that's not an emergency, something that, you know, it would just be nice to be fixed, we can go ahead and open a new ticket. And anybody can do this. Ask for your name, your email address, those are the only two that are required. You pick a topic, subject, and write your message. So we've got some predefined topics in there. I have a fallen tree that needs to be taken care of. Once they submit this, they get an email conversation back and forth. So they get an email, a citizen gets an email. They, the city staff who were responsible for that also gets an email. And so when it's done, staff can come back and say, it's done. And they get an email back saying, it's done. So there's a, sometimes you get, you call, you say, I'd like this taken care of. You never really know if it's done, or if it's not, or if it's working. This is a great way to do that. I think that was about it with that. And, you know, just, we asked for some feedback from some of our community partners before official launch, and we want to continue to ask for feedback from our citizens. To provide feedback, there's a help button right at the top right corner, that you can click on. Right there. And you can just send an email. So we're always open to, open to comments, ways to make it better and easier to use. And that's all I have. So if you have any questions, I'm.
Any questions? Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. Looks very interesting. One question I have is, years ago, we could go into the archives, and I think it went back to the mid to late 80s of council meetings or whatever else was taped. Can they be brought back on here? I noticed the last page, prior to this webpage, you could only go back, I think it was the January of each year. And there are citizens out there that go back and research some of these meetings. Is there some way to get the archives back up there?
Yeah, depending. Depending on the format, a lot of that's easier to do with a different type of engine, more of an archiver than a website. But absolutely, anything's possible. This site currently goes back a year. But what it, what this site has that the other one didn't, it has the finance minutes. You know, it has the community development minutes. The other stuff that was all lumped in with the council packet in certain times, all those agendas, all those minutes, you can go and find them back now. It's just a year right now. Doesn't mean that we can't go back farther.
I mean, is that something you will pursue, or?
Yeah, I think that keeping records easy to find is easier on staff and everybody. Absolutely.
Okay. I'd appreciate if we could, you know, feature that in there.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Following up on what Councilman Christensen was talking about, I'm curious about, so the ability, the search engine there where it says I'm looking for?
Yep.
You could search a term to see if it had been discussed at any prior council meetings, and that would bring up the minutes from those meetings, if, assuming that the subject was discussed?
Yes, the, currently, at, at this point, it doesn't do that.
Well, then go back a year, you said, right?
Right, the, the year. Part of the deal is, this one just looks at words we've typed, it doesn't look at documents we've put in. But the reason it's, it will, and the reason why it's taken a bit is because we use Google for that, and they have to go through and index all of our stuff first. So it will be coming very soon.
Yeah, because I, I mean, I was, for example, I was doing some research a little bit ago on the internet, looking up different communities and got onto their websites, and I was just curious, and for example, one of the certain terms I used was flowers. And I think it was Alexandria had brought up, I think I got at least a half a dozen hits, and any one that I clicked on then brought me right to the council, most of them were for minutes from council meetings, it showed me when that, that subject had been discussed there.
Yep.
And what had, what had been discussed. And what I was trying to figure out is, you know, who to contact and get some more information. And I was pretty impressed, so I'm hoping that, that feature will work here.
Yeah, it's definitely a priority. In fact, our old site did that, and again, it was because Google had the content indexed. They have to actually go through the pages and read every word and make an index of it. So we're just waiting for that to complete. So we can actually do even more with that search, and that's, that's what's great about it, is, for example, if you type in permits, we can have a highlighted section that, well, they must be looking for, are typically looking for building permits, you know, so you get a highlighted building permit, click here. You don't have to kind of go through all of Google, you know, to find, to find that.
I mean, I just think, I mean, I was impressed with some of those websites, the searchability, and I think for the citizens, that's a great thing. And, for example, would we be putting on, anything on there, like our stormwater minutes from the, from bar, and so the engineers that did the stormwater study for us?
The more the merrier. That's what I say.
Right.
You know, the easier it is to find here, the less time, people have to come somewhere to get it, the less staff time they have to go find it.
You get less phone calls.
Yeah. So, you know, we, we really looked at this to make it easy for a citizen to get this information, and we want to continue to do that.
I think it's great. Thank you.
Councilman Reese?
Mark, right?
Yes.
All right, I don't want us to call you by the wrong name.
That's all right.
This whole thing, when you start talking about entering new information, and it just seems overwhelming to me when I sit here and I think of all the activities and, and all the paperwork that we have with the city, and it just seems very overwhelming to me. So this had to be a huge job to, not only to craft it, but to make it function correctly. So I appreciate that. You were talking about, you gave the civic center as an example on the calendar. And I, I'm just trying to get this in my head a little bit, as, as far as that or a building permit or whatever, do the different departments enter that themselves then, go into the calendar and have access to it, and they enter the, the event or the building permit or whatever it might be?
Yep, yep. And right now, our team of thirteen has access, it will spread out through the organization.
Okay.
And that provides a couple of things. One, it takes a workload off of, you know, for example, the agendas right now, we pass around, and it eventually gets to me or my, my coworker, and we put it up. Well, now, the person who makes the agenda can immediately put it up, and that step's saved, just like that.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's, it's great. Plus, you get more updated information. I don't know what's always going on at the fire department, but the fire department does. So now they are able to, to do it themselves.
Okay, great, thank you. Helps me understand a little more.
Any further comments, Councilman Oliver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for what you, for what you're doing, and it was really refreshing to see the, the comment page or report a problem page. I just can relate, one story to how you're going to, you've helped me already by doing this. I can just tell people to rather than call city staff, rely on a telephone, they can email it. And once, the situation was, two people hit me up on Second Street Southeast because of all the potholes, they counted like nineteen, and I called on city staff, and they were fixing this week, by the way, good job, you guys. But just that little burden time that I have to burden staff is, is going to help improve things, and I think it's just fantastic. The only thing I don't see up here is, it, it would be just a thought, as far as businesses go, when they click on the city website, I don't know, there might be other search engines that they can go for as far as the Chamber of Commerce, or a flower shop, or a car man, a car dealer, or things like that. I don't know if we can assist in that. I know it was talked about, I think, a couple of times with different constituents, with Charlene at a meeting about how we can somehow maybe use that in the website. I don't know if that's the function of city government or not, but I'm just wondering if that could be somehow complemented with the existing businesses that we have in town and to help support them in case people are looking for that, whether it be realtors or home builders or whatever. And the other thing I'd, I'd like to see is, if it's possible, we could have a comment page on things that are done right, too.
Yeah, shouldn't call a report a problem.
Rather, just the problems all the time, it'd be nice to hear the positive, or thank you for getting the job done, because this could be a great, great feedback for the council mayor and for staff and the employees as far as how we're getting things done, and the, and the positive results we're getting back to the committee. I think it's fantastic, good job.
We have, just on that comment, we do have one more of our interactive features, and we call it Your Voice, and that's right here. And I've had the downtown plan, that's one of the bigger things recently.
Okay.
And so what does, people get more familiar with it, but Your Voice, it allows you to comment on it. So in here, in unanimous vote, City Council recently approved the new downtown plan, so you can download it and view it, and what are your thoughts? And they can put in their information, their email, does not get shown privately, you know, and, and it's just another way to solicit feedback, to, to get information, get thoughts from, from our citizens. So that may be good, may be bad. Report a problem, I, there was a lot of thinking onto what to call that thing. They don't want to encourage problems, but we do get some, some, some positive remarks, especially via email, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Any further comment? Councilman Blake?
Yeah, thank you, Mark. I'd like to thank for your effort to put into this. It is a new, fresh look of our, you know, what the city is. I think the internet and the web pages we have out there are becoming more and more used by everybody to look for information, and it's nice to see it, but fresh look with lots of happy faces on it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Further comments? I'd like to make a comment, if I may. Mark, can you go back to that report a problem?
Sure.
Is this, how is this being sold to the public?
Which one? Just the report a problem piece?
No, the, the website.
In terms of marketing to the, to the community?
Marketing, I mean-
Well, this is kind of, this is, we can answer that. This is the kind of public launch of our website. We've had on our actual, on, on the prior site, the kind of information of, you know, checking back and that this was the launch date. We have done press releases, we, I talked about this today on open mic, of course, you know, we're hoping to get some media coverage on that. And, you know, for the folks that are currently using our website, obviously, when they, you know, if you have it set in your favorites and such, and pull up City of Wilmer website, you're going to get this website now. And so those are some of the ways that we're marketing it, and then these features and such, and I think we'll be highlighting some of the new features on the website, kind of in those areas where Mark showed that, you know, kind of the updated information and the news boxes will give us a chance to highlight some of the features of the website as well.
Thank you very much, but I, I think the more people that know about it, the more citizens that know about it, the more feedback you will get on the support center.
I agree.
So thank you very much for your job, well done.
Thank you.
With that, we'll call on Mr. Williamson. Would you like to name an address and what your intent is?
Certainly. Mr. Mayor Don Williamson, a resident of the city of Wilmer, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for just a few minutes tonight, I know you're busy, and I will, I will be brief. I'm addressing you tonight for my position on the Promotions Commons Committee for the Wilmer Design Center, which I have served on for about six years now, currently serve as chairman of that effort. And listening to one of the last council meetings, it came to our committee's attention that there may be some misunderstanding on the planting and the maintenance and care of the downtown flower baskets this year, for the year 2012. And I believe you've been given a written response by our committee that addresses many of those points, and I won't take your time tonight to review those, but I would be glad to address your concerns if you ever want to contact me on them, be glad to do that at a later time. I would like to state for the record tonight, though, that nobody from our committee was more disappointed when we discovered we were not able to pull enough resources together to plant flowers downtown this year. And it seemed like something was wrong when we couldn't put it together and get all dirty on a Friday and go out and, and plant all those flowers. We were disappointed as well as you, and we appreciate that it got your concern. We're sorry about that we were not able to pull enough resources together to do it this year. I might add that many of the volunteers and resources in the past that have accomplished that have no vested interest in the downtown, have no ownership in the downtown. In fact, we have many participants that come from outside of town to help us, which we appreciate. So it becomes a wonderful combined effort to add a little beauty to our community. Beautiful flowers, holiday decorations, attention to the appeal of downtown Wilmer is very important to the mission on our committee. However, it's not our only endeavor. Like your city, our city, like many businesses, governments, citizens, and nonprofits, in the last couple of years, we had to make the difficult decision on how to spread our limited resources as far as we could this year. And when we realized we did not have the ability to keep the flowers watered for the entire season, we didn't feel it prudent to spend many thousands of dollars in that planting when we had no way to keep them alive. We thought that would be a waste of, of resources. We refocused, and I would like to tell you real briefly what we are focusing on this year. Our committee has looked at objectives that we feel will enhance and sustain our goals over a longer term. We have spent a lot of time on a stakeholder campaign that we started in 2010. In 2010, we had some success raising some outside revenue to our efforts. We raised five thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. We hit it a little bit late in 2011 when we realized we were going to run short of money, but I can tell you that we were successful in raising pledges of thirteen thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars for 2011. And we are working on our stakeholder campaign for 2012 already, and we believe now that we have a better understanding on how to do that and how to ask for the funds to support the objectives we have, we, we believe we'll have continued success, and we hope that'll increase this coming year. The second thing we are working on is, we obtained design funds for Minnesota Main, from Minnesota Main Street for the trail link from Litchfield Avenue to Becker Avenue. There is a trail expansion to connect our trails from the Lakes area to get it to downtown Wilmer across the bridge. Part of that is happening in the next few years, but there was a missing link, and that is to get from the base of the bridge, I believe, to Becker Avenue. And we hope that the rest of that plan will happen when we look at redesigning Becker Avenue, which is in the plan that takes place at a later date. We're, we are currently redesigning our website for Wilmer, uh, Wilmer Design Center, and that was overdue, just as you're doing the city site, we needed to improve our site, and that is being done currently as well. We feel it's important to highlight the who, the what, the where, the resources that downtown has. We feel it's important to catalog the professional businesses downtown, the retail stores, the niche shops. Not only that, but we, we want to make it so that people can see what is available. There's huge pockets of the customer base at different times of the day in downtown Wilmer that I think some businesses don't even recognize or realize are there, and we just want to find a way to highlight those resources and make it easier for people to find. We also believe that downtown Wilmer serves as a wonderful incubator and a low-cost place to start a business, and not only to start a business, but a place where certain businesses can certainly flourish, and don't have to be a startup business, but a mature business. It just depends on the climate you're looking for and the environment. The fourth thing that we're working on this year is, we've found grant funds to help provide for a, a green watering system for flowers downtown. We don't believe that maybe we've brought a complete solution to watering all the flowers for all the flower baskets, but if we can get some of a solution to maintain flowers in the future, that will be a partial success. And there again, we worked in collaboration with Minnesota Main Street. Just want to sum up by saying thanks to the mayor, thanks to the city council for your vision. We appreciate your efforts in working with Wilmer Design Center, with our committee that has been working on beautification and promotions of downtown. Your leadership is essential, you've proven that this year, thank you for that. In closing, if I may, just one last comment. I'd like to speak as a citizen of Wilmer and not as my, on my position of, on the Promotions Committee, but as a private citizen. I'd like to emphasize, you know, I, I work too, like you do, so many of you, on many nonprofit boards, many nonprofit agencies, and I know what it's like to work with volunteer, volunteers, and, and for those people that contribute their time and their talent. And I'd like to emphasize to the city of Wilmer how powerful it is when we can work together and partner with volunteers. And a lot happens, and a lot of good happens when we work together, and that's why we need your involvement, we need your leadership, we're thankful for what you've done, and together, we hope we can do more in the next few years.
Thank you. Don't run away. There might be some questions. I'm going to open it up because I see some people here from the downtown area. If you have any questions or comments that you'd like to add, if not, I'll open it up to the council. Any questions or comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Anna?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just want to say thank you to the Design Center and, and all that you have brought forth and all that you have done, and it's a, it's a great organization, and I'm glad to hear you're working on possible alternatives for next year, but just thanks for everything that you've done for the city.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. With that, we'll open it up to the open forum, and I have on here, Vicki?
I'm not sure if this is the right place for it. I wanted to address the three-point-two liquor amount, so I'm on liquor license, I'm not sure how that works.
You can address that under open forum and such, if you would just come up to the microphone, kind of, and, and just state your name and address. I mean, you, you can certainly address it at this point.
Okay, my name is Vicki Seer, I live at twelve-twenty Olaf on the north side, and I am concerned about the consideration for the three-point-two liquor license. The KRA raceway has always been promoted as a family-oriented project, and I don't see where liquor goes along with a family-oriented. I don't think it gives our children the right idea as to what a family-oriented activity is. Drinking and driving, the KRA is always talking about all the people that come in from out of town, so they're all driving, there's probably no one walking over to that racetrack, so anybody who's drinking there is going to be driving in the city and driving home. I'm curious about insurance, who's going to be responsible, who's getting the money for selling the liquor? How are you going to keep underage people from getting liquor, from getting, I know it's not liquor, it's beer and wine. How are you going to separate the kids from the twenty-one-year-old who goes over and buys two, you know, two cans of beer or two, two glasses of wine or whatever, and takes it back to the stands and gives it to his buddies, and then goes back again, and they're all underage? How do you stop that? Are you going to prevent drivers of the race carts from imbibing? I don't want to see people out there on the racetrack, you know, okay, you can't have it, well, what's to stop them from going up and getting it before they go for a race? Are we going to have extra police patrols in the neighborhood to make sure that the neighborhood is safe from people who may become inebriated at the racetrack? And then I'm also concerned, is this going to open up drinking at the county fair? That's another place where I think drinking is not allowed. There's got to be activities that families can go to where they don't have to worry about the guy next to them drinking beer and wine and getting drunk, it just isn't a family-oriented situation, in my opinion.
Thank you. You've brought up some good points. Should we address those points, or should we talk to Kevin about it?
Um, I think it would probably be best to address them at that agenda item if you would want to-
Okay, yeah, because I'm concerned about who's going to be responsible if somebody is over-served and winds up in an accident, you know, that people sue because somebody was given too much, you know, alcohol at a bar. Who's going to be responsible for paying for something if someone is over-served here or if underage people? Who's going to pay the fine if the police or whoever it is that conducts the sales deceit, you know, they conduct, where they go into the bars and they bring a young person and then they buy beer? Who's going to pay the fine in the event that they sell to underage people also? I mean, who's going to be responsible for those kind of things?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what your answer was?
I think it would, it's probably best to address those when you address that agenda item.
Okay.
Address those concerns at the time of the agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussions on the open forum? If not, we'll move on. We have the mayor proclamation, Park and Recreation Month. Steve Brizendine, would you please step forward?
[laughing]
Right up to the front. Right up to the front.
To the podium, please.
All the way.
Steve, I would like to make this proclamation, whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of the communities throughout this country, including the city of Wilmer, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And also, whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas parks and recreation areas improve water quality, protect the groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development and provide—and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and natural resource are—I'm sorry, natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Park and Recreation Month, and whereas Wilmer recognizes benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, I, Frank Yanish, mayor, to here proclaim that July is recognized as Park and Recreation Month in the city of Wilmer, and I'd like to leave you with this proclamation. Thank you, Steve. Good to see you.
With that, we'll move into the Finance Committee report for June 25th, Point 12. Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on our agenda had to do with deferred—the deferred assessment ordinance. Clerk Halliday explained to us that they had previously reviewed a draft of the proposed deferred assessment ordinance, which would have established gross household income levels at HUD low-income limits. Concerns were raised that those income limits were too high. So since that time, staff has researched income statistics for Candyoy County and now presented that information to the committee with the recommendation that the HUD very low-income limits be instituted for this ordinance. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded, and passed, and I would introduce a motion to introduce an ordinance creating a new Chapter Five, Article Five, special assessments, which describes improved costs eligible for special assessments and discretionary deferment of those assessments. To amend the draft ordinance to use the HUD very low-income limits and to set a public hearing for July 16th, 2012.
Second.
A motion has been made to introduce an ordinance creating a new Chapter Five, Article Four, special assessments, which describes improvement costs eligible for a special assessment and discretionary deferment of those assessments. To amend the draft ordinance to use the HUD very low-income limits and to set a public hearing for July 16th, 2012. Now I think I said that there was a motion, but there's a motion and a second, so I want to clarify that. Discussion? Councilman Newman?
What are the repercussions financially to the city?
What are the repercussions?
We currently have in a—we currently have been offering deferred assessments. This sets the policy in order and clarifies—clearifies who is eligible for those deferred assessments based on—based on income.
Great. This is not for—the apartment complex is owned by—
No. No, this is—these are individuals that would claim—
All right.
These are for individuals that would claim a hardship and ask for a deferral.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
The next item, we reallocated some Public Works capital outlay. Staff presented to us a request to reallocate funds in the 2012 Public Works Capital Outlay Program. Replacement of a utility tractor was estimated at $74,781, but the total purchase cost is $78,455.53 for the tractor with a bucket attachment. Unused funds from the purchase of a front-end loader would cover the overreach for the tractor replacement. It's being requested that $3,674.53 of those unused funds be reallocated to the purchase of the tractor and bucket. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded, and passed, and I would introduce a resolution amending the 2012 Public Works Capital Outlay Budget by reappropriating $3,674.53 left over from the purchase of a front-end loader for the purchase of a tractor and bucket.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution amending the 2012 Public Works Capital Outlay Budget by reappropriating $3,674.53 left over from the purchase of a front-end loader for the purchase of a tractor and bucket. Discussion?
Are we getting rid of the old one, Mr. Mayor?
Are we getting rid of the old one?
I'll let Holly answer that.
Yes, sir. We are.
Okay.
It'll be auctioned at the next auction, not till next year.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
And that motion carries.
The next item was a miscellaneous item. I raised the question about the way we handle donations that come from individuals and organizations, and was wondering if we couldn't just put that on the consent agenda rather than have it go through committee and then again here. The committee was favorable to that idea. They also had a suggestion for the mayor that perhaps he could verbally note each item that's included on the consent agenda, so the public as well as the council is aware of what's being acted on in that—in that motion. This would also, at that time, detail any donations received, and do appreciate—appreciation and acceptance could be approved at that time. So that was for information only. I think it was consensus that we should at least give that a try, hoping that the mayor might consider the request of the committee to itemize what's in the consent agenda. So unless there's questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Finance Committee dated June 25th, 2012. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. With that, we'll move into the Public Works Safety Committee report for June 26th. Councilman Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city has received three quotes for the replacement of two of our lift stations in the Welshire addition. They're 31 years old. They plug frequently. It's a safety issue for our staff and their entrance into the confined space and taking the pumps out, and it is the recommendation that we replace the two pumps utilizing the low quote from electric pump, and this would be funded from line item 46, designated to some pump inspections. So I would introduce the resolution accepting the quote from electric pump in the amount of $23,695 plus tax, and authorize the mayor and city administrator to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to make a resolution to accept the quote of the electrical—electric pump in the amount of $23,695 plus tax, and authorize the mayor and city administrator to sign on behalf of the city. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry. Councilman Newman?
Hey, Doc. Didn't we just remove some pumps on the southeast side of town?
Yes, but they don't—they aren't—I don't think they're the same.
They're not compatible.
They don't—they don't fit this.
That's—
They will be used—
Yes, but not—
—in the applications where they fit, but they will not—they don't fit this.
That was my question. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
And that motion carries. The city's received four bids for Project 1202, and that's the relocation of the 16-inch water main that we talked about in the past at the Minnesota Department of Transportation facility, and this is a directional bore 16-inch. It's funded through the municipal utilities, and the low bid was from Ellingson Drainage. I would introduce the resolution, Mr. Mayor, to accept the low bid of Ellingson Drainage Incorporated in the amount of $124,740, and authorize the mayor and city administrator to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept the low bid of Ellingson Drainage Incorporated in the amount of $124,740, and authorize the mayor and city administrator to sign on behalf of the city. Roll call.
Councilmember Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That motion carries. Public Works Director Holly Wilson came to our committee with the agreement between the city and BNSF Railway Company and the Commissioner of Transportation for the Trot Avenue West Railroad crossing, and this is the installation of flashing light signals with gates, one cantilever, constant warning circuitry, and LED lenses as required by MINDOT, and to be maintained and operated by BNSF Railway. And this would—is proposed to take place in 2013, and it would be funded 90% by state funds, reimbursable by federal funds, and 10% by the city at an estimated cost of $258,750. The agreement was forwarded to our city attorney. I spoke to him before the meeting, and he has reviewed it and says it looks good to him, so I would introduce the resolution approving the agreement.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to introduce the resolution approving the agreement continuing upon approval of the city attorney and authorize the mayor and city administrator to sign on behalf of the city. Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
And that motion carries. Public Works Director Holly Wilson also presented the Stormwater Task Force minutes regarding our watershed management plan, and that plan poses no financial obligation to the city and is recommended for adoption by staff and our water—stormwater task force. So I would introduce the resolution to accept and approve the final watershed management plan.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve and accept the final watershed—watershed management plan. Is there any discussion? I have a question. What does that mean?
It means that the city would adopt the report by Bar Engineering that was presented to the council about a month ago, but would adopt that report, and it would be kind of our guiding document for stormwater improvements. It doesn't bind us to any specific action in that plan, but it recognizes that as a plan for the city's stormwater management.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That motion carries. Public Works Director Holly Wilson also brought to us—if you recall, a couple of years ago, two, three years ago, we had some discussion in regards to LED street lighting, but at that time, the products that were out there weren't really delivering what we were looking for. But there are currently three LED streetlights in place because there's been some significant improvements in the LED lighting—for street lighting. So we've got three of them in place, and we're going to have a one-year test, and they're—in—if you want to drive down, I'm sure you're going to see the difference because they're a real white light in comparison to our high-pressure sodium, right? Which are almost kind of a gold or yellow color to them. But the streetlights—the LEDs are on Northwest 7th Street and Park Avenue, and then on Montangalia between 8th and 9th Street, and then again on 23rd Street Southeast. And they're there because we have employees and council members that live in that area that can monitor—for any problems that might arise, and these lights last 20 to 25 years. So hopefully, they are as good as—the high-pressure sodium as far as delivering lighting to the street. That was the question that I had compared to what? How long are the other ones last? The high-pressure sodium? Boy, I think that was—didn't you say at the meeting—I think you—
I don't—Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I guess I don't recall the life expectancy on the current streetlights that we have. That would be a question for the municipal utilities.
Thank you. You can change the bulb in a high-pressure sodium, but in the LED, I believe you replace the whole assembly, right? I believe that's the case.
Mr. Mayor? I know the assemblies with the high-pressure sodium last considerably long period of time, but as Councilmember Reese stated, the bulb itself needs to be replaced. I'm not sure the exact replacement schedule on them, but it's nowhere near that 20-year timeframe. You're talking probably a three- to four-year timeframe.
Oh, really? So considerable difference.
Yeah.
So hopefully—they're—and this was just for information only, so it's just going to be a watch and see how they work. So Councilmember DeBleek has one just down the street from him, so. Beyond that, there were no miscellaneous items, so that's the end of the minutes, and I—if you got questions, we certainly can take care of questions, but I would move to file the minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of Public Works Committee report for June 26th, 2012. Discussion? Councilman Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to comment on the LED lights, they also use—I believe it's about 10% of the energy of the other lighting. I mean, so they would save a lot of money. Imagine if we changed out every light in Wilmer. I mean, the electricity—electric bill for them would be just, I don't know, 67, 80, 90% less, saving energy, but that's one of their benefits.
And that is a huge concern because if you don't—if people—the public doesn't know it, you know, the street lighting is all paid by the city. It's paid by us, and not only within the city, but on the bypass. So that's a huge bill. Councilman DeBleek, did you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to clarify it. An LED streetlight uses about 40—about 45% efficient over the high-pressure sodium, which means you're saving about 65% of the energy level versus the high-pressure sodium. So—and also, I believe the MUC is paying for all the streetlights, both energy and the replacement of the fixtures, so I think it's—we need to rely on their expertise as to when they want to put these on a replacement schedule, when they're not going to replace how many, and throughout the course of a year if they decide to continue to replace them.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor of filing these minutes say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Community Development Committee report for June 28th. Councilman Dacken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number one, public comments. Laura Becker inquired about the occupancy—occupancy status— Laura Becker inquired about the occupancy status of the new mosque at the former Lafayette School. She also asked about the installation of the required sprinkler system. Staff responded that the mosque had not been approved for permanent occupancy as the sprinkler system was yet to be installed. And I guess I would ask, do we have any indication of when that might happen?
I believe there is a meeting tomorrow with the staff and members of the Islamic Society to discuss that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
There is a meeting tomorrow with the staff and representatives of the Islamic Society to discuss that matter.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Charlene, but they have not moved in?
They do not have permanent occupancy, no.
Okay, thank you.
Item number two, animal ordinance. And this is a motion. And I would ask for staff to, because they did so much good work on this. I think the chief and Bruce Peterson, staff presented background information on proposed language for new animal ordinance. The committee discussion centered around the number of birds to be allowed in residential districts and the setback requirements for animal enclosures. It was recommended that the side setbacks be adjusted to a minimum of ten feet to be consistent with the ten-foot rear setback requirement. Following discussion, a motion was made and seconded for the following, that the proposed ordinance parameters be approved with the side setbacks adjusted to ten feet, and that the city attorney be directed to prepare an ordinance for public hearing. And I would move that, Mr. Mayor. Second.
The motion has been made and seconded that the proposed ordinance parameters be approved with the side setback adjusted to ten feet, and that the city attorney be directed to prepare an ordinance for the public hearing. Discussion?
Is this on our website now? This, that would be good if we could get that.
It is not, it is not now. You know, I guess it was included with the minutes, so it would be, yes. The information would be included as part of the minutes of the Community Development Committee and/or as part of the council agenda packet.
Okay. Item number three is...
I'm sorry, there was, I don't think there was a vote on that motion.
No, there wasn't a vote on it yet. Was there further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries.
Item number three, rental housing inspection schedule. For information only, the committee reviewed the inspection plan for the city's rental housing inspection program. It was noted that registration terms for the program had been adjusted a number of times. The Wilmer registration and inspection schedule was compared to the process utilized in East Grand Forks. East Grand Forks allows their inspectors to waive an annual inspection if the previous inspection yielded no corrections, although the fees are collected annually. It was determined that the Wilmer program had no need for a waiver provision due to the fact that units are licensed for a longer period of time. Staff recommends keeping the city of Wilmer rental housing registration and inspection schedule as it currently is, but that the council consider adjusting registration fees as they continue through the budget process. Item number four, miscellaneous. Chair Dawkin asked what the next steps were for the city relative to the Lakeland Hotel project. Staff offered the opinion that there were no further steps for the city to take at this time due to the withdrawal of the developer from the project. It was recommended that the city be open to other proposals for the redevelopment of the Lakeland Hotel building. Staff was asked about conditions in the mobile home parks. There are ongoing drainage issues in the West Park that the county has issued correction orders for. The owners of the park are still working to remove as many bad homes as they can and to consolidate the two parks into one. And, Mr. Mayor, unless there is further business, I would move to file these minutes. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Community Development Meeting Committee Report for June twenty-eighth. Discussion? Just a question, maybe for Bruce. On the mobile home parks, they're consolidating. I assume they're talking about consolidating in the West?
That was our desire, Councilmember Reese. It appears that they're more interested in consolidating homes into the East Park because the West Park has serious documented infrastructure issues that do not exist at the East Park. I don't know that they've made a formal decision one way or the other because they've really made no move to do anything. But it struck us as a little odd that they had the East Park for sale, and yet we're talking about consolidating homes into that park. So I'm not really sure they know what they want to do at this point. It'd probably be, it'd probably hinge a lot upon whichever park they received an offer for first.
Isn't there infrastructure difficulties in the East Park also?
There's some sewer and water issues there. The big problem at the West Park is the stormwater drainage. And there's some blockage in the lines that take the water off-site. And as near as we've been able to determine, one of the major tile lines or storm sewer lines that runs from that site crosses private property with no easements, and it actually runs underneath a home.
It seems to me that the East Park sometimes operates as a temporary retention pond because the water doesn't get out of there very quick either.
That is true. But if you've ever had the opportunity to witness the West Park after a major rainfall event, it's amazing the amount of water that's held up there on the hill just because there's a bowl in the center of the park. And last time, there was, I would say, seven or eight homes that were surrounded by a foot or more of water for several days. And it's a definite electrical hazard up there, and it's a health issue. The county has issued the orders to correct that drainage problem. But we haven't seen if they're going to meet that timeframe or not.
Well, to be real bold about it, the East Park is really unsightly.
I'm not going to respond to that because I don't think either of them looks very well. Looks very good.
All right. Further discussion? I don't know if this is the time or the place for this comment, but I would like to make a comment. I understand that there is no health inspector in the city of Wilmer? Or for the city of Wilmer?
That is correct. That function's performed by the county.
By one person in the whole county?
I don't know what their staffing is, but it's a county function.
Which committee would we bring this up at to discuss this a little further?
Yeah, I suppose you could bring it up at Community Development, if you'd like us to look into that. But it is currently a county function. The county has the Board of Health and...
I, and that would be Chris, am I right?
Chris Stein, I believe, is the individual. But I can certainly talk with the county administrator.
Thank you. Did we have a motion?
File the minutes.
Yeah, I think you had a motion and a second.
We did.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. At this point, we'll move into the consideration of the three-point-two liquor license for KRA Speedway. And who's to speak to that?
In Kevin, in the city clerk's absence, I will do that. You have before you an application received from Candy Racing Association, which does business as KRA Speedway. They're located at Eight-O-One Seventh Street Northwest, and they have applied for a three-point-two liquor and on-sale wine liquor license. The proposed area for sales and consumption is generally described as the bleacher-style seating with a roof over the entire area. And that is where alcohol sales and consumption would be limited to that area. To respond to a few of the concerns that were brought up by the, or questions that were brought up by the citizen, in terms of who is responsible for, you know, for insurance or sale of liquor, and if there is underage sale of liquors, that would all fall upon the permit holder, which in this case would be Candy Racing Association or KRA Speedway. And that is no different than anyone else who holds a liquor license. You know, a restaurant or another business that holds a liquor license, they are responsible for selling to adults. And if they are selling to minors, then they face the penalties of that.
Okay. Were there some other issues that I would like the council to address, if they would? Can you explain those one more time?
Well, let's see. So they're applying for the license themselves for the...
Right.
Where else do they sit besides?
Come up to the mic because it's on TV.
I've never been to the racetrack, so where do they sit besides the bleachers?
I don't know, I don't think I've been to the...
I mean, if the alcohol is restricted to only the bleacher section, isn't that where everybody sits?
Uh, yeah.
So is that a restriction other than they aren't going to have it in the pits, in other words?
Correct, and they can't sell it outside.
I understand that that was an issue that you had is that were the drivers of the race cars able to purchase this?
Well, again, that would fall within the guidelines of KRA and how they run and establish their races. I would presume that that is not something that they would allow.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that the chief probably has looked into that. And I'm thinking and may have a response as to how that would be handled.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, in their application, they were specific as to where alcohol would be served. And that was under the covered section of the grandstand. And that was where it was limited to.
As I recall, there was another question that this young lady had, and that was that, what would keep someone from buying two beers and bringing one back to an underage person? Is there anything that would prevent that?
Absolutely nothing, other than the fear of God or the fear of the police.
Councilman DeBleek, did you have another question?
Yeah, just for clarification. I think they had beer served out there last year.
They did, it was not managed by KRA. It was under a different liquor...
A different licenser, though.
Correct.
So how does this differ from what they did last year to now?
I believe KRA wanted to realize more the profits from the liquor sales, which is why they switched over to them obtaining a liquor license rather than the previous vendor.
Another question we have, alcohol or beer served at the Stinger Games. How does this license differ, KRA differ from the Stingers as far as the way they serve? Or...
From what KRA has proposed, not much different. You are going to have a confined area where liquor can be possessed and consumed, which is under the covered portion of the grandstand, limited to that. It will not be outside of those areas. They will have people that monitor at the time of sale. And they will also have people monitoring within the stands to make sure that only those that wear wristbands are consuming the alcohol. So it'd be quite similar in effect.
Thank you, that was...
I don't know if I addressed this to you, Charlene, or to the chief, but it's on the recommendation. It says to approve the one-to-four-day temporary on-sale liquor license.
I'm sorry, that is for the one that follows that. This is, no, there are two, there are two this evening. Just...
Oh, yeah, there we are.
Flip back page, yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry.
This would now be a temporary license.
Okay. Does that answer your questions, ma'am?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, by the way, for pointing that out.
Okay.
So we have a motion on the table?
So move.
So seconded. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the three-point-two liquor license, an on-sale wine liquor license to the KRA. Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for Ricky. I share your concerns also. However, the entertainment in Wilmer, the Stingers is a competition for the raceway. You know, the Stingers serve out there. We haven't had a problem yet, as I know of. They issue wristbands for those that are eligible. You have to show your ID, and then they give you a wristband. I don't believe you can take them outside of that sheltered area, can you, chief? I think you have to consume the alcohol in the, under the grandstand. And it's worked well out at the Stingers game. And baseball is, you know, all-American family pastime also. And it's worked rather well out there. So I hope that helps with some of your concerns.
Councilman DeBleek?
Yeah. I don't know, I kind of disagree with, you know, the baseball, hot dogs, beer always go together. I don't think alcohol and car racing go together. The KRA has always tried to promote the racetrack and their events out there is family-friendly, family events. And I think this is altogether a wrong message for saying to go out and get drunk at the racetrack and drive home. We've already got a lot of people when they're leaving the racetrack right now, they think they're still at the races. They get out, come out of there, and they floor it, go down Seventh Street, go out on the First Avenue, or First Street North. And you give them a little bit of alcohol, and I don't think it's going to get any better. So I disagree with even allowing alcohol to be sold out at that racetrack.
I guess I would ask, are you suggesting that it's a different class of people that attend the races other than the baseball game?
That's a different type of event. Like I said, cars and alcohol don't always mix.
We have people driving in from Benson to see the Stingers game, though. And Danube, and Olivia, and Bird Island. And I'm sure they consume a beer and a hot dog and popcorn.
Councilman Anderson, did you have a comment?
I did, thank you. And I'm not going to get into who does and who doesn't, but I think we have some history. It was, they had alcohol there last year. It was, they had alcohol there last year, and as far as I know, I never heard any problems or issues as a result of what, what happened last year. It seems like it's got controls built in, our police department will monitor it, so I read it wrong, I, I don't see a problem with it.
Councilman Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Speaking of that, I, I'm assuming they'll, will they go through a check too then, chief? An annual compliance check? Thank you, Doug.
If you're referring to the compliance checks that we do to all the other liquor establishments in the community, yes.
So, so they're done at the Stingers game and at the racetrack that we done?
Correct, but they probably will only be subject to one check per year versus two, because we normally do, we've actually altered our checks this year to incorporate the summertime events. There's a few businesses, such as the golf course, wasn't always open when we did our checks, so we're trying to alter those times, so we can include some of those seasonal events that also serve liquor.
Okay. Do we also do a compliance check on, this past week at Robins Island, they, they served alcohol there?
Yes, they did.
Do, do we do a compliance check there, or not really?
By compliance check, do, if you mean, did we send people in undercover at a certain age to see if they would sell? No, we did not. We monitored the event.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments or questions?
Just a question. Mr. Mayor, didn't we approve the Stingers game strong alcohol?
Not strong. I don't believe-
Was it beer and wine, or 3.2?
It's 3.2 and wine.
It's beer and wine.
Just beer and wines, the same thing.
The same thing, yes.
Yeah.
Further discussion? Roll call?
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
No.
Reese.
Aye.
Christianson.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one no.
That motion carries. Move into the, now the temporary on-sale liquor license to the Eagles. And Charlene, you'd like to explain that to-
Yes, this, this is a request for a temporary on-sale liquor license for one to four days. It is from the Wilmer Fraternal Order of Eagles, and it is in order to allow them to host a picnic that is for their, for members, family, and guests only, and the consumption area would be, would be in their rear parking lot, and an area that is fenced in.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the one-to-four-day temporary on-sale liquor license to the Eagles Club. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christianson.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nos.
That motion carries. This time, I'd like to make the announcements, or have the announcements made of the council committee meeting. Councilman Reese?
Public Works, Public Safety will be meeting at 4:45 July 10th, Tuesday, July 10th.
Councilman Anderson?
Finance Committee will meet Monday, the 9th, at 4:45.
And Councilman Ammon?
I believe, I don't believe it's scheduled until-
July 11th.
July 11th PM.
Okay. Councilman Dacken?
Community Development, 4:45, July 12th, Conference Room One.
And at this particular point, Councilman Dacken, did you have a comment to make? Or Ms. Laney?
Yeah, I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Typically, we put the flags up on the 4th of July, but this year, we had a request from Stephanie Felte, who is the Candy High County Safe Community Coalition, and they asked if we would put the flags up on the 3rd, which we are, and so, we need some help at 7:00 tomorrow morning, putting the flags up. Basically, this deals with to enforce speed limits in July, and I'll just read a portion of this. It's located north of Robins Island. The kickoff event for law enforcement's regional speed enhanced, enhanced enforcement wave. Sheriff Dan Hartog will be there, the speakers will be Brad Hanson, the Wilmer Ambulance Manager, and Candy High County Safe Community Coalition Member. Also, Dr. Scott Abrams, Wilmer Ambulance Medical Director, and Rice Hospital Emergency Room Doctor. Those attending will be Candy High and Swift County Sheriff deputies, Wilmer, Atwater, Benson, police officers, Minnesota State Troopers, Candy High County and Swift County, Minnesota law enforcement agencies, including Candy High, Swift County Sheriff's Office, Wilmer, Atwater, Benson Police Department, as well as the Minnesota State Patrol, are working together throughout the, the month of July to ticket drivers exceeding the speed limit. To kick off the beginning of the enhanced enforcement wave, Hanson and Abrams will speak about how speeding and other aggressive driving behaviors are major contributing factors in traffic deaths and serious injuries in our area. So, at 1:00 tomorrow, that takes place. Flags go up at 7:00 and come down at 6:00 on Wednesday evening.
On the 4th.
On the 4th, right.
Thank you, Chairman, or Councilman. I would just like to make a point to encourage as many council people to be there as possible. I will be there, to show support for departments and also for our veterans. And with that, I will entertain a motion to, I'm sorry, Councilman.
Mr. Mayor, yes, just a comment, a question. In our packet last week, we received a draft of the charter and the minutes of their last meeting, and they requested that we have a work session or something to go over the final draft and see if it's okay with everybody, so they can make their decision to put it on the ballot. They have to make that decision in August. And in that draft, there was a, our ordinance that defines the city administrator's duties is in that draft verbatim, pretty much, and I am wondering why it needs to be in there. And as if we, if we're going to change anything in the future, we would have to open the charter, where everything else we do is by policy and ordinance. So, I suggest we, we get together and decide whether or not we want that, the, do her duties, her or his, whoever it is, in the charter. There's one thing, you know, that I'm concerned with, and it's an issue I brought up many times in the last two years, and that's negotiating contracts. It says that it's the administrator's duty, and a citizen brought up to me the fact that of our operating budget, it's 70 to 80 percent employees. We spend almost $2 million a year in health and life insurance benefits. I don't know if that's sustainable, and I, I think either the mayor or a couple of council people should be in on every negotiation session, whether it's arbitration, mediation, or just a negotiation session, and I would request that this be brought to a committee, and that, I guess it would be labor.
We can put that on the agenda.
So, we can discuss it.
Charlene, do you know if there is a work session scheduled?
We have not scheduled a work session with the city council, with any charter commission. We had the previous work session, and I believe these were the result of those, and these same items were discussed at that time, but we can schedule another one.
Is that what you're requesting?
It needs to be discussed, because the charter commission needs to get in August. They have to get out what they're going to put on the ballot, what, what draft version of the charter is going to, is going to be there. And I spoke to one of the people on the commission earlier today, and I'm fine with what they got in there, except for that one provision, we're putting that ordinance in the charter. I mean, it just doesn't, doesn't make sense to me, because to, to change any of those duties of the administrator, we'd have to open the charter, and it's silly, because we do everything else by policy and ordinance, and it's already in ordinance, it's in ordinance already.
The city attorney ordinance is being, is being handled the same way by the charter as well.
Speaking of that, maybe if we do have a work session, our attorney can be present. I mean, should be, that one, but we need to get the ball rolling here. I know there's one more department heads and first-line supervisors that's left to negotiate, and I guess they're not going to do it until LLS was finished, and we got your memo on that, it isn't finished yet, so I would like to put it on the labor committee minutes as soon as we could.
It was discussed previously by a labor committee, but we'll put it on there again.
Thank you.
Did you have a question, Councilman?
Just a little bit confused. You're talking about two different issues here, Councilmember Christianson, or one? You're talking about meeting with the charter commission, and you're talking about what the city administrator's responsibilities are?
Pretty much the same, it's the same issue. They put it in the charter. Our ordinance, they put it in the charter. If you look in there, it's all red, it's, it's a page and a half of the administrator's duties, and-
And those were, were not in the old charter?
Were in the old charter presently, but this is for the new one.
Mr. Mayor, what we should maybe do is have another hour-long, hour-long meeting or something, discuss the charter commission issues by themselves prior to our next meeting. And I don't know what date that would be, but I'd be willing to have any time available for myself, if that's what the-
We'll try, we'll work with the charter commission chair and try to schedule that meeting.
Thank you.
As soon as we can, as soon as is practical.
Anything else under Ms. Laney?
Move to adjourn.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to adjourn, we are adjourned.